I'm sorry, motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I'm moved at the board approved of August 12th, 2024 agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion passed. Next we have a report of board members. Dr. Douglas.
Um, I want first off, I want to thank all you guys and everybody else who has sent me well wishes from the surgery that I had. It was pretty, it's a pretty big one. And so I appreciate everybody and I'm glad to be back. Uh, I did get the opportunity to join the summer graduation. I love it. I love seeing those young people who have made some missteps or mishaps along their journey, be able to come back and graduate and get what they need to move on in life. Uh, secondly, I got chance to uh go to the Sisters in Christ Community Graduation uh this Friday for the community kids. They had all kinds of programs where kids graduated from rites of passage program. Um, they had uh podcast programs, uh musical programs, all kinds of programs that kids uh would have otherwise been on the streets this summer, had an opportunity, even a job readiness and job opportunity, employ job employment opportunity. I got a chance to go see them graduate and get honors this weekend. I think that's the extent of what I've been able to do. And board training, I was a part of a board training last week. This was wonderful and very beneficial.
Thank you.
I think I did it all. Okay.
Mr. Newt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I was also at the same gathering with um the doc this week. It was, it was really, really good to see all the youth that was involved in the Sisters in Christ summer program. Uh, but I also got to introduce the keynote speaker, which was great. I also was a part of the new employees and the new teachers love this week, this week uh with Dr. Martin Knox. And I wanted to welcome all of them. It was amazing. Um, we also got, got to get over to the uh ribbon cutting. And I want to tell you guys, I appreciate you guys for having me over there. Let me be a part of that. It was like really, really amazing as well. Um, I also had, had the opportunity of going over to um a gun summit, uh safety training and um and I was really, really blown away with the new things that I learned from that. And I was intrigued by that. So thank you guys and I'm looking forward to being here.
Okay, um, thank you for your reports and um looking forward to the uh, the new school year. Went to some of the same events uh that the other board members went to and uh just looking forward to an uh, to an exciting year. Um, we're gonna uh, as a board, we're gonna continue to be focused and even more focused on uh student achievement and uh, and just uh appreciating our teachers and, and we would definitely appreciate you guys that come and uh attend and, and be in the know of what's going on in the district and your interest in the community. And so uh, we just want to thank you all for that as well. That's it for the uh, report of the board members. Next we have our uh reporter superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Newton, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. Well, we are well underway in opening for the 2024, 2025 school year. And it seems like just yesterday I was saying, have a great summer. Not anymore because we are well underway. I just want to extend a very big congratulations and thank you, a sentiment of gratitude for our curriculum and instruction and assessment department. Um, we met with our new teachers last week and just the excitement that was in the air was just refreshing to know that we have faces who are eager here to educate our children, to support our children. Uh, and so it was just great to see and they did an amazing job providing opportunities where there was hands-on learning, where there was collaboration, where there was thought-provoking activities um that will lead them in that pathway to ensure that we're doing our absolute very best for our students. So I just want to publicly thank our curriculum and instruction and assessment team uh under the leadership of Dr. Greiner, who's not with us this evening, but it was absolutely amazing. So I want to say thank you. I can't say thank you to Dr. Greiner without touching on uh Dr. Calcara in the Human Resources Department. Um, I just want to thank them for their hard work and ensuring that we have staff to educate our children and to support our children. And if you drive through Raytown and maybe some other places where they've gone that I haven't recognized yet, you'll see signs around that says, we're hiring. Not only will you see signs that are out and about, but we also have these flyers. So I'm asking you all to take one or two or three and distribute them in the areas where you frequent uh to make sure that we are having uh quality individuals come into our district to provide support to our children, whether it's through the realm of education, whether it's bus drivers, um whether it's food services or other support uh supports that they can provide our children. So thank, thank you, Dr. Kara, Calcara and your team uh for your work and your efforts. Dr. Douglas touched on it just a little bit, but I also want to thank the board. Um, last week we uh engaged in professional development. Oftentimes people just see us sitting at the dais, but learning never stops. And so we have to serve as models for our children. And so I want to publicly thank the board for engaging in professional growth opportunities so you can further enhance what it is that you know, so you're able to support our community and our children and our school district. So we can be the mark of excellence that I know we can be. So thank you also very much. I also want to thank you for being present during our ribbon cutting ceremony. Many of you had the opportunity to see the auxiliary gym. It is absolutely amazing. But what you were not able to see is the face on those children when they came into the auxiliary gym. When they smelled the fresh paint in the wax that was on the floor, they were excited uh about their new auxiliary gym. And very soon we will have the same sense of excitement at Ray South High School when we do our ribbon cutting ceremony um for that work as well. So I want to thank Mr. Husted and his team for continuing to push that work forward, not just the construction work, but the work inside of our buildings to prepare our children um for when they return on the 21st. Right now we have so much uh, so many activities taking place in the community. And I again want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to Grace Way Church. I also want to say thank you to Duffel Bad, which is a business right up the street, no plugs, uh no advertisement, but sincere thank you for them uh in the work that they're doing to support Raytown Quality Schools. Uh, both uh organizations had a book bag and school supplies giveaway. And it was just amazing seeing children dance, smile, get face paintings uh and all those things that are necessary for them to be successful in school. And yes, the smiles are necessary as well because we're giving children a sense of hope. Hint, hint, hashtag Raytown. And so um, thank you for those individuals and those organizations. Uh, if you have not REEP, it's also doing a backpack giveaway um this week. I believe it's the 15th. Um, go to their website. It's also been posted. And so we're grateful for the support that we are receiving from REEP. Um, right now our parents are going through registration. So I encourage all of our parents to make sure that we are providing the appropriate information so that kids will have a start without disruption, making sure that they are up to date with their immunizations. But even more so that we are completing the lunch applications. Oftentimes the lunch applications are not being complete and we need to understand that nutrition in the lives of our children helps with the academia, helps with their academic success. So please, parents and for all of us who are here, encourage our parents to make sure they're completing those lunch applications because oftentimes they're not being completed. Um, we've sent out information on our social media uh portals. Uh, we just want to make sure that our children are supported and they receive all that they need to be successful. I also want to conclude by saying thank you to all for helping us to establish the start of the 2425 school year. Our communications department has done an amazing job by providing uh information to our community. If you have not looked at any of the videos that they've created to help individuals along the way, uh it's actually something new that we've done and it has been very helpful. And so under the leadership of Marissa Cleaver Wumble, who's whispering to Dr. Calcara, she didn't say anything about me. I am now. So thank you, Ms. Cleaver Wumble um for your work. Um, and I appreciate you. Um, and thank you to uh Dr. Moore and Ms. Basset for your leadership and making sure schools are ready to receive our children. That concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Burton, the other items that are listed under 8.1.2.3 are all informational items for the board.
Thank you. Next we have a presentation recognition.
Good evening, President Burton, Vice President Newton, Dr. Martin Knox, Board of Education. Uh, this evening we have the pleasure of recognizing Dr. Hearn and Nurse Douglas from our Raytown Schools Wellness Clinic in Premise Health. And they are being recognized for the compassionate and quality care they provide to RQS and for their hard work and commitment, which is reflected in their patient satisfaction. So we have a video about um these two great individuals.
My name is Dr. Hearn and I have been with this clinic since it opened in 2015. So whenever I did my interview for this job, this clinic was down to the studs. You know, just see how the clinic has grown and how the community has just embraced us. That's been an awesome thing to watch over the years.
The feedback from Dr. Hearn is always a hundred percent positive. It's no surprise. Her bedside manner, her care for her patients is unprecedented.
I love giving back to the community. So I guess nursing is like my calling. I like the fact that we are like an all-around clinic. Some school districts don't have a clinic like this that they can go to. I love that fact that we do have that for the community.
What a great team they are. We get to offer this caregiver who has such a heart and compassion for what she does and for whom she does it and Dr. Hearn that it is just unparalleled.
We are a small clinic, so we all have to work together to get the job done. They call us a little family here.
Even though Raytown is kind of right in the middle of the city, I feel very much like I am like a small-town family physician because the patients, often they know each other. There's reunions out in the waiting room. I hear all day.
I take care of patients as if they're one of my family members. I want to have respect and have an open conversation with the nurse and my doctor.
I have the benefit of being able to sit there for a little longer and talk about what's going on with their lives. I just love having the time to be able to do that. It's not easy to be a teacher. They go through a lot. When they come in here, I just want them to feel supported and heard and validated. And I just love taking care of them.
At the end of the day, it's all about patient care. So if we can get the patient care down, I'm happy. I'm happy at the end of the day, so.
Nisha and Dr. Hearn have been consistently doing everything they can for our employees. And they are well deserving of being recognized as the ray of hope. And they certainly are rays of hope in our learning community.
I would like to ask Nurse Nisha and Dr. Hearn to join us.
Don't do it.
Let me just say, well, they don't know, but it has not been the case for any individual professionals. Uh, it is nothing like putting your care in someone's hands that you can do. It's bigger than what most will imagine. You go into some, to see someone for whatever the ailment is, and of course I'm speaking from experience, but to know that you're trusting the individual to make the decision and that they're making the right decision. So I just want to say thank you for the Oprah sessions, thank you for, you know, oh, yeah, that's what you do. And I said, I said, but I still haven't said. People are not making money, but so just thank you very much. The environment that you create here and I appreciate.
This evening I also want to talk a little bit about our um Caring for Kids partnership. Um, we have had the privilege of being as part of the Caring for Kids Network for several years here in Raytown. Um, and through that network, we have created some amazing partnerships that support our students and our staffs throughout the year. And I want to invite Portia Seals uh Forward, who is the Executive Director of Caring for Kids Network. She's a familiar face here in Raytown uh because she also is a part of our RQS community. But um, I want to invite her up to tell us a little bit more about this partnership.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having uh the Caring for Kids Network um at your uh board meeting today. It is an honor. Um, and we just wanted to talk a bit about um our network and the impact that we are making in Raytown and hope to make it to the future. So caring for kids, um. It's not moving. It's okay. Our vision is to see all children have hope and reach their highest potential. And um, we do that uh through missional calls of mobilizing um community organizations in partnership with schools. We, I'm gonna pull up my other slides. Okay, here we go. So um, our areas of focus, um and we're in seven school districts, uh four charters and one private school in the metropolitan. And um, that rounds out to 113 schools.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, man. I thought you, okay, I, I didn't, I left the place until uh, and you're back to me all.
Yes.
Okay. All right, here we go. Um, so our areas of focus, uh we have 113 schools in the metropolitan, serving schools and a 411 community partnering organizations. Um, in Raytown, um, we are doing some great work. Yep, next slide. There we go. Um, we're doing some great work and I just wanted to talk a bit about um who we are. So we're a community uh partnership of schools. We do not charge school systems for our services. We just believe that um, there are enough things that schools have to worry about and um, we believe that we can take care of that. So we have fundraisers and all these things to take care of our uh resources. We are backbone organization. So you won't, you won't ever hardly ever see the staff, but you will see the partners um that work with us that we train to support schools in the metropolitan. And then we're a four-step process of engagement and not a program. Um, we are goal-driven, so we um, we focus on uh the greatest challenges at schools and turn those into goals of reaching. And then our partners work together to um help to reach those goals. And then finally, uh one of our strong, one of our strongest uh points is our collaboration. Uh, we know that there are various opportunities where volunteers can come in, support schools and leave. Um, but we hope that when um folks come together, they work collaboratively, um, the, the idea of transformation begins to happen because they're working together and they see their resources go further. Um, our four-step process of engagement has a simple end goal, um to create strong partnerships. And uh, we engage community, uh then we connect them to schools that are also interested in community. And then uh, we empower and coach them. So um, we asked the question of how can we help you reach your goals? And um, this school, this past school year, um, over 4,000 projects were completed on behalf of our principal's goals. Uh, we impacted in our network over 47,000 students and um, 1.4 million dollars was invested in in-kind donations. In Raytown, um, our, our network is using a new uh reporting tool. And so um, this is our first school year of re, using our new reporting tool. And uh, we're really happy to see that um first semester, the reporting tool was used 37% of the time by our school partners. Um, and then by second semester was raised um to nearly 50%. And we're really happy to say that um, 159 projects were done collaboratively with community partners throughout the city, uh mobilizing uh over 140 volunteers. And um, over $15,000 was impacted in in-kind donations directly to schools, never through caring for kids. And then uh, we impacted uh over 5,400 students. So um, the schools that we will focus on this school year, um, we have our middle schools that will be in step one along with New Trails because New Trails has a brand-new principal and school liaison. Um, our, our um school partners that are in step three will be Little Blue and Fleet Ridge. Step four, which means they're doing really well on their own, um but we'll continue to coach them, will be um Blue Ridge Elementary, Three Trail, Three Trails Early Childhood Center, uh Robinson Elementary in Spring Valley. And then finally, we are really, really happy um to say that we have schools that have um gone through the four-step process of engagement and they are sustainable. And so we check in with them, but they really have it um down pat with their partners of how they, how they work together. And that's in Eastwood Hills um Elementary, Laurel Hills Elementary, North Fleet Elementary, Southwood Elementary and West Ridge, Rest Ridge, West Ridge. Sorry, guys. So um, before I open and see if you all have any questions, I just want to take the time to invite you all and um, and your community uh partners to join us for our, our Raytown kickoff, which will happen September the 12th um at ARSEC from nine to 10:30. Um, it's a joyous time of celebration uh where we just uh celebrate what has happened over the last school year and look forward to what we'll do this school year. We get to hear from our amazing superintendent, um the principals um share goals uh with their partners. And we just really get our feet grounded for the new school year.
Mr. President, I just want to thank you guys for what you do. And it's good to hear that we got some schools in the district that have gone beyond.
Yes.
Above and beyond.
Yes.
Uh, to meet the needs of our young people. And thank you. I've been a part of some of your uh uh events. And it is grand.
Thank you.
As it pertains to children. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. Hey, and for our final presentation this evening, I would like to invite Ms. Martha Cockrell from the Raytown Educational Foundation up for that presentation.
Technology. Stayin' close. President Burton, Vice President Newton, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Martin Knox. Thank you for letting um the foundation rec, publicly recognize our platinum-level pillars of the foundation sponsors at your Board of Education meeting tonight. As I um introduce each sponsor, I'm going to ask them to stand and remain standing until all four of them have been introduced. Um, if you want to check, some of them had some gentle arm twisting to come tonight because they're very humble about their contributions, but I got them all here. Our first sponsor is Gwen Mundorf LLC. And I know we have at least two people. So why don't you both stand up if you would please? Gwen Mundorf was our first pillar sponsor as we launched our program in 2015. And Gwen Mundorf was also our first platinum-level sponsor. We're extremely grateful to Gwen Mundorf for their faithful support for nine years. Um, Charlotte Belger. This is hot. I'm gonna assume they're following directions behind my back. Okay. And if not, let me know. Okay. Many of you know Charlotte through her work with the Raytown Historical Society. In addition to her passion for history and the Raytown community, she and her family have been long-term, longtime supporters of the Raytown Educational Foundation. In our early years, Charlotte's family provided the foundation with a generous gift that allowed us to expand our scholarship, grant and student recognition programs. Personally, Charlotte has been a pillars of the foundation sponsor for the past five years. Our next sponsor is Bob and Donna Kessel. Not all of you.
Thank you.
Not all of you may know that Bob is the father of our foundation. Shortly after his retirement as Raytown High's principal, Bob became REF's first executive director. He served in that volunteer position for 18 years, guiding us through the early years and establishing REF as an organization to support and enhance our schools. To this day, Bob and his late wife, Donna, remain monthly donors. Our last sponsor is the Soul Family Foundation. The Walter A.
Thank you.
The Walter A. and Charlotte Soul Family Foundation has been supporting REF since 2001. Representing the Soul Family Foundation tonight are Shirley and Dave Worth. It was.
Thank you.
It was through the WORSE connection with Trish Soul Nichols and the United Way that the Soul Family Foundation began its support of REF. Just recently, we learned that the Soul Family Foundation has provided REF with a very generous endowment gift that will ensure the sustainability of our work for years to come. Please join me in thanking all of our platinum-level sponsors for their faithful and generous support and sponsors. If you'll follow me to the lobby, we have a box of platinum decorated cookies for you.
Um, next we have our public comment period, but seeing that there is no one that signed up to make public comment, we will move on to the next agenda item. Which is the board committee reports. Uh, finance committee.
So finance committee uh met this evening. And uh, I would encourage all board members to click on the finance committee meeting agenda and look at those documents. But we're in good shape right now financially. We're, you know, we're all going to wait and see what happens with the Jackson County issues, but we have uh some money that we're going to be spending from our bond issue still. So we're excited about that. We're in good shape on those items.
Ms. Bobby, uh, policy committee.
Yes, the meeting was called to order. The following policies were discussed and moved to the first read. EHBD, artificial intelligence use, FFA memorial on facilities and ground. Resend. KK, public gifts to the schools. JJ, JG dash R1, school discipline. Dash R one, School Discipline. The following policies were discussed and moved to adoption. GCBDA. Professional Staff Short Term. Leagues. GBGDBA Support Staff. Leagues. The meeting was adjourned. Future meetings, August. The twelfth, which was not. Done. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Bobby. No report for the capital improvements. Community Engagement Committee?
No reports from the Community Engagement Committee. It will be next month.
Curriculum Refresh Development not here. Safety Committee not present. Is there anything from the Citizens Advisory Committee? All right.
I'm just gonna move the board approved July twenty twenty-four policy review committee meeting minutes, July twenty twenty-four Community Engagement Committee meeting minutes.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next we'll have a discussion on the. Committee assignments. I do have some changes to it if there's. I guess I should probably. Say what they are. The. Rick Moore is mostly pretty much the same. Rick Morris. Many appointment is still the Finance Committee. I'll be a member there. Ms. Bobby. Is the Policy Committee with Natalie standing there. Capital Improvements Committee, I will be the chair. With Mr. Watson being a member. Community Engagement Committee. Will be Natalie Johnson. And a member be. Nody Newton. The. Chair of the Curriculum Committee. Be Natalie Johnson. With Rick as the member of that. Safety Committee will continue to be Michael Watson, Dr. Douglas. And the Citizens Advisory Committee would be Nody Newton. With. Dr. Penelope. Being the staff on that, on that committee. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the board approved the committee assignments for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Second. So just to pick my question, so the attachment does not read the same, or you'll update that and reattach it?
Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Next we'll have the report of the Raytown Educational Foundation meeting.
I have the Raytown. Educational Foundation Board Trustees Meeting Highlights for July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. End of the year report in supporting and enhancing our schools, the foundation is proud to have contributed a total of one hundred. Thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars in programs and services to the Raytown Quality Schools. Students and staff during twenty twenty-four and twenty-three and twenty-four. Scholarships. Ninety-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which includes youth sports, one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. High school dual credits, thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Class of two thousand twenty-two seniors and renewable scholarships for tuition. For the year twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Professional Development Scholarships, five thousand dollars. Student recognitions. Seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Grants were twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which includes teaching and learning. Grants fifteen thousand, two hundred, sixty-eight dollars. Major Savers Building, three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Cash for classrooms, five hundred and sixty dollars. Culinary Arts Institute Cinder Experience, one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Special Projects, three thousand and forty-six dollars. Which includes Men of Excellence Students Leadership Conference, one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. The Sparkle Empowerment Student Leadership Conference, one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Martha has already given. Props and kudos to our pillar of foundation and sponsor recognition. Which at the platinum-level sponsor contributes five thousand dollars or more to the foundation. She's already called those names. Again, we thank them for being our platinum-level sponsors. Raytown Community Pride Scholarship Essay. We had seven students to give one thousand dollars in scholarships. Which were awarded for graduating seniors from the class of two thousand twenty-four. Had several students to submit essay quotes. And I just wanted to read the prompts. The prompt for the quotes that they submitted. I read through some of them. They were wonderful. They had to ask, answer, why are you proud of your Raytown Quality School education? What will you remember about your academic extracurricular activities? Adult and student friendships, abilities to make and pursue goals? How has your high school experience contributed to your development? As a self-confident, goal-oriented adult? And their. Essays are, what their quotes were wonderful. That's my report. For the Raytown Educational Foundation.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention. Just the City of Raytown Liaison, that would be myself. Raytown Education Foundation Liaison will be Dr. Matt Landen Douglas, continue that. And Nody and I will serve as delegate and alternate. At the MSBA Conference. Next we'll move to unfinished business. With the board policy adoption. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approved policies, BDC, closed meetings, records and votes. DFI, setting tuitions for district programs. GBEBC, criminal background checks. IND, ceremonies and observances. JEC, school admissions, JECA, eligibility to enroll. And JO, student records.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next we'll have our new business, kindergarten student devices. Their motion?
Mr. President. I'm with the board approved purchase of four hundred, three hundred E Chromebooks for kindergarten classrooms and CDWG for price of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we'll have the. Quantum Health Professionals Agreement.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the contract agreement for the Quantum Health Professionals LLC to provide school nurses for. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year for the cost. Cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next we'll have letter commitment for water source heat pump system replacement.
President, I move that the Board approves the letter of commitment. We're trying for the replacement of water source heat pump project, but they back out the of ninety-six thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next we'll have the Elevate K-12 Contract Agreement.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approved the service contract as written.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we'll have a board policy ados- adoption.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve policies. GCBDA, Professional Staff Short Term Leagues and GDBDA, Support Staff Leagues.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Motion. Motion passes. Next we'll have. Information on. Benefits direct. Conducted a post-enrollment review. Of the twenty-four, twenty-five open enrollment period. Information. For information, send the packet for. Let's have our first read.
I think it's just, it's just a good, it's good news, it's a good survey. It's like. Everything's good about that.
I shouldn't did that. Anyway. More information, first read of. These policies. That. Ms. Bobby gave her report. Next item. Not even breaking the record. Next we have approval because of the consent agenda.
President, I move that the Board approve the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We have one donation to read about. It's a donation of skeleton of roller stand. Worth three hundred and thirty-five dollars from Eastwood Chiropractic to Hernan Career Center. Is that plastic? Anyway. Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Their motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move that the Board adjourns the regular Board of Education meeting at seven twenty-nine P M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Bobby?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.